Good evening and welcome to Speedway Town Council Meeting. I call October 14, 2019 meeting to order at 7:00 PM. My name's Eileen Fisher. I'm President of Speedway Town Council. Those attending this evening as well, from right to left is Counselor David Lindsay.
Good evening.
Vice President Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
To my left, Counselor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
Jacob Blaisdell, Town Manager.
Good evening.
Monty Combs, Clerk Treasurer.
Good evening.
And Bob Clutter, Town Attorney.
Howdy do.
This time we'll do the pledge. If everyone will please stand. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the minutes, the approval for the minutes for September 9, 2019 meeting. Any changes on those minutes? Seeing none, those minutes have been approved. Next I have the appointments for boards and commission.
President Fisher, I nominate Adam Gonzalez to the CDC.
Actually, I need to, Madam President, I'd like to close nominations.
Okay, so we have a nomination for CDC of Adam Gonzalez and those nominations being closed.
I second his motion to close nominations.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a first and a second to close the nominations. With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving Adam Gonzalez on the CDC, say aye.
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 Those opposed, it's approved 4-0. We have another one for libraries, is that correct?
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Tiffany to the library board.
I move to close the nominations.
Second.
I have a nomination of Jennifer Tiffany and nominations closed. Go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor approving Jennifer Tiffany to the library, say aye.
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 Those opposed, Jennifer approved 4-0. Do we have any others? Is that the only ones tonight?
That's it.
All right, next will be the approvals for memorandum of an agreement with the consolidation City of Indianapolis and Marion County Department of Public Works. Jacob.
Yeah, Madam President, so this is an MOU that we have with the City of Indianapolis. There's currently one existing and the idea is essentially that stormwater doesn't really care about city or town lines and so it runs sometimes from Indianapolis into Speedway and sometimes from Speedway in Indianapolis. And this effectively just memorializes our agreement to work in cooperation. It sets up, you know, who the right people are to contact if someone's aware of a spill or some other issue with stormwater. We've been passing this agreement year to year. This agreement does extend the termination out for five years so that us and the City County Council aren't having to hear it every single year. It effectively says that, again, we'll comply with the requirements that we have under stormwater, that the city will cooperate with their requirements and that we'll work in cooperation so that we're all compliant and would appreciate your passage.
Madam President, having read the memorandum, I move that we approve it as presented.
Second.
So first and a second for the approval of the memorandum agreement. At this time, we'll take public comments. Seeing none, any questions for councilors? Hearing no questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving the memorandum with consolidation of City of Indianapolis, say aye.
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 Opposed, approved 4-0. Next is the approval of the agreement with IMGIS LLC and this is a GIS software and support service. Jacob.
Yeah, Madam President, so this is, GIS stands for Geographic Information System, which essentially takes a map online and allows us to kind of lay out where various assets are, so everything from fire hydrants to our water lines allows us to provide details as far as, you know, when the last time a fire hydrant had been serviced or used, if there's a water line there, how big is that water line, that kind of stuff. And allows us to put tablets in the hands of our employees so they're on the field, they can see immediately where certain things are or if they find differently, they can update it so that we have an accurate tracking of where all of our assets are at in the town. Really cool stuff. We've been working on this for a few years now, have had a lot of great success working with IMGIS and this is an agreement that would extend our relationship with them for another three years. Again, employees have gotten a lot of benefit out of this. It's kind of one of these things that if it helps us to avoid hitting something, it pays for itself right away. So it's a really smart investment in our capabilities and in our employees and would appreciate your passage to continue working with them.
Madam President, I move that we approve the agreement with IMGIS as presented.
Second.
The first and a second for the approval. At this time, we'll take public comments. Seeing no public comments, any questions from councilors?
Not a question, just to point out, it goes from October 31 to 2019 through October 31 of 2022 and it's for $48,000.
Any other questions or statements? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving the agreement with IMGIS LLC, say aye.
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 Those opposed, approved 4-0. The next few items are the ordinance for our budget for 2020. Just real quick before we get started on those ordinances, there has been a meeting scheduled with all department heads, Clerk Treasurer, Town Manager, as well as the councilors the third week of August where we cover budgets with those department heads. We also listen to things that they are needing through that process and so that is, was open to the public. So with that said, Jacob, do you want to add anything else to that?
Sure, yeah. So the budget has been advertised and is eligible for first reading tonight. If the council approves it tonight, it would move on to second reading, which would occur in the meeting on October 28. From there, it would be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance. At the state, they will review to make sure that it doesn't appropriate funds that we don't have or expect or reasonably expect to collect. It does not do that, so I do not foresee any problems there. The budget once again prioritizes public safety. Eighty-eight percent of our general fund goes to our police and fire service. It also allocates over a million dollars of state pass-through funds from the gas tax to our road, streets and sidewalks, infrastructure. We of course hope to continue leveraging many of those funds to continue to get the community crossing and NPO grants and those sorts of things. And I would just mention that while the budget is important, you know, we're monitoring it throughout the year to ensure that funds are coming in the way that we thought they were and that we don't need to make any reductions or other adjustments to make sure that we don't overspend the funds that come in. And then the budget of course is, it's a maximum amount. We historically have not and do not and don't anticipate spending everything. We like to come in under budget, but it is setting the maximum. And with that, we would ask for your approval on first reading.
Good question for our attorney. Bob, do we, I know there's public comment on our agenda and of course on anything we vote on like this, we always ask for a public comment and appreciate that, but do we have to call a public hearing here?
Yes, these are public hearings, so you should open the public hearing before.
Thank you.
Deliberating.
Okay, so with that said, we will go ahead and open the first public hearing for the approval of the 2020 budget for the Civil Town and Speedway.
7:09.
Will take any public comments during this time? Seeing none, we'll close that hearing for the 2020 budget for Civil Town Speedway at
Madam President, I move that we approve ordinance 1318 on first reading.
Second.
The first and a second for ordinance 1318, which is the approval for the 2020 budget for the Civil Town and Speedway, first reading. Public comments? Seeing none, any questions from councilors? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving ordinance 1318, say aye.
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 Those opposed, approved 4-0. Next, we'll open a public hearing for ordinance 1319, which is a 2020 budget for the school, Town and Speedway.
7:11.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:13.
Madam President, I make a motion, we accept ordinance 1319 on first reading this evening.
Second.
The first and a second for ordinance 1319 for the 2020 budget of school for Town and Speedway, first reading. Public comments? Seeing none, any questions from councilors? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, school board is approved 4-0. Next, we'll open up the public hearing for ordinance 1320. This is for the 2020 budget for the Speedway Public Library, first reading.
13, 7:13. 7:13, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, no. Close the last one at 7:13. Seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing for the Speedway Public Library at 7, what do you got, 7?
13 and a half.
13. I'm so off, I can't see that clock back there.
We opened at 7:13 and it's still 7:13.
Okay.
And with that, I move that we approve the public library budget proposal on, for first reading.
I'll second with a comment, I'd like to welcome members of our board from the library that have joined us this evening tonight.
So I have a first and a second for ordinance 1320, which is the approval for 2020 budget for Speedway Public Library, first reading. Any public comments? Hearing none, any questions from councilors? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving the 2020 budget for Public Library, say aye.
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 Those opposed, it's approved 4-0. We'll open up the public hearing for the Speedway Public Transportation at?
7:14.
Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at, what do you got, 7:14?
7:14, yeah.
Madam President, I move that we approve ordinance 1321 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second and a third for ordinance 1321 for approval on the Speedway Public Transportation. Any public comments? Seeing none, any questions from councilors?
Not a question, but just a statement. As President Fisher talked about, as we headed into these, we've had several meetings, a lot of individual conversations. This is just the first reading and we'll have, continue to have lots of conversation with our department heads, other folks in the community and there weren't a lot of questions this evening, but there have been a lot of questions to this point and we'll continue to ask those until we move to the next approval stage.
I'd just add to that, the public hearings that we had in August, I believe, where the department supervisors came in, gave us very thorough reviews of each budget and greatly appreciate all of their help and their time, Monty and Jacob, all the work that both of you and your offices have put in for it. It's greatly appreciated.
Any other comments? That will take a vote for ordinance 1321 for the Speedway Public Transportation. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, ordinance 1321 approved 4-0. And last public hearing for the, oh no, sorry, whoa, thank you.
You just wanted to do more, didn't you?
Next is the approval, I know, I got on a roll there. We'll go to the claims, Monty.
Thank you. About 22 pages of different claims that we took care of for the past month. This goes from September 7th through October 11th, Friday. So, for you, I'd appreciate your approval. Are there any questions?
Madam President, I move that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
The first and a second on the claims as presented to us. Public comments? Hearing none, any questions from councilors? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the claims as presented to us from 9:07 to 10:11, say aye.
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 Those opposed, claims approved 4-0.
Also presented to you are the adjustments on utilities for the same period from September 7th to October 11th. We missed our, we had two in a row, we didn't have any, but we just had this time, but total amount of $126.89. Appreciate your approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve the utility adjustments as presented by our Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
The first and a second on adjustments, any public comments? Seeing none, any questions from councilors? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving the adjustments from Clerk Treasurer, say aye.
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 Those opposed, adjustments approved 4-0. Anything else for us, Monty?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Next, we'll do reports from the department heads and I know there are a few that are not here, just due to the fall break, so we will start with Police Chief Jim Campbell.
Good evening. Couple of things. We were just advised by our, you know, the vests that we wear, protective vests, we were just advised that we received a grant of $10,845, which covers about half of the total cost. Those vests are replaced every five years and, you know, it was time for them to be replaced, so, you know, that grant's going to help us. We had a very successful shredded day for the full shredded day. $4,400, you know, came in on the 5th and, you know, we appreciate all those people that volunteer and, you know, come out to make that a success. The other one is, just as an update, Norm's not here, but, you know, our drop-off inside the building, we've gotten 257 pounds of pharmaceutical drugs in that drop-off, which, you know, and it's probably two or three years ago, it would have been 500. So, you know, the numbers are dropping. What I'm hoping is that we've disposed of, you know, a lot of the drugs from the pharmaceutical drugs from the past and hopefully that trend will continue. That's kind of what I got.
Questions? Thanks Chief.
Thank you Chief.
Next is Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
Hey, everybody. Got several short things. We just finished up two weeks of fire prevention. October is fire prevention month and the theme this year was plan and practice your escape plan. Battalion Chief Jeff Hartman heads up our pub ed efforts and we've been in every school, including St. Chris Preschools. We, the guys on shift have been great. We'll mark the ladder out of service to go with Chief Hartman when they talk, show equipment, so we're really, really proud of that program. We also recently, if you don't follow us on Twitter, we're trying to be more active there. We hosted the high school football team, as we've done for the past six years, for a spaghetti dinner the night before homecoming. And then the following week, Station 89 always allows the junior high FCA club to do their tailgate there before the football game, so they utilize the grill and all that and so we've tried to keep some of those traditions going. One, working with Allison's on several variances and other project issues for everything they've got going on, giving them the proper support letters that they need to get variances through for the hundreds of millions of dollars they're investing there. We are continuing to work with the Dollar General store, getting it into compliance. Johnny Russell, our inspector, and John Merritt have been working with them and because we were able to close that business with the backing of the Indiana State Fire Marshal, when they reopen, they have to do a certificate of occupancy. So we're working with them, they've been good in complying and they look forward to their renovations being done and all of that. Prax Air, who's making a major investment, a lot of people aren't familiar with that campus, but they used to have an atrium area that was open. They're actually building a facility within a facility and that's going to be an atomizer that will accommodate a new process that they're doing. So John Merritt and Chief Milhorne and I, Johnny, have been over there several times. Our guys are going to be touring that process center, all three shifts, so that if we have an incident there, we'll know how to mitigate it and those sorts of things. We found out that we're one of the finalists for a marathon grant that will allow us to buy new five-inch hose, new supply lines, things that we can use all over the community but that really help us there. I mean, it's really important we have the ability to lay basically a portable water main if we have something there. So they help provide grants for the local partners there and I do want to take, especially since the board's here, I want to take this opportunity to thank the library board. We are in the process of putting a fence, black-coated chain-link fence between our building and the library to help with walk-through traffic, you know, with vehicles being rifled through, some of those sorts of things. We think that will help mitigate some of that because the school has brought a fence down the other side of our property and the library board voted to split that expense with us, which is something they really didn't have to do, but it does help with securing their back parking lot as it gets darker earlier and that sort of thing too. So I really want to thank you guys for approving that. Worked with Darcy on that, so that's really all I have. You guys have any questions at all? All right.
Thank you Chief.
Thank you.
Next is Parks and Rec, Tammy.
Good evening. First of all, I wanted to report that the Land Water Conservation Fund grant, we did pass the state level, we got approval through the state level, so now it goes to the federal level and we should find out in March if we get that, but it sounds very promising. I want to also thank Prax Air volunteers, came out this past week on Tuesday and Thursday and helped do a lot of work in Leonard Park. We had some mulching done, painted the bathroom building and the Shelter 1 building, so it was, and planted trees. We got this year's trees planted in both parks, thanks to those volunteers, so we really appreciate that. And this past Saturday, we did the Meadowwood basketball dedication and that was a big success and I want to thank everybody who came out for that. It was a real treat, working on that the last 11 months and it was a really nice day and turned out really good, so I encourage everyone to go check out that, the marker at Meadowwood Park. And then I just want to remind everybody, I've had several complaints recently about dogs not being on leashes, so I just wanted to remind everybody that dogs are supposed to be on leashes at all times. And then also trail etiquette. Now that we have the BNO done, we're seeing more people riding and walking and just a reminder that wheels always yield to heels, so the bicycles need to yield to the walkers. We've had a complaint about that as well, someone was actually hit by a bicycle, so. And with that, that's all I have today.
Any questions?
Tammy, just a real quick thank you to the effort you put forth with the Meadowwood basketball court memorial dedication. It was, it was a tremendous day. As a little boy, I remember watching some of the players that actually were quite a bit older than I was at the time and one of those is Billy Keller. I was just a little tiny little boy watching him play there and he was there Saturday and the way he organized that event was fantastic, so, you know, Eileen was there and it was great to be a part of that, so.
Yeah, thank you and I look forward, hopefully it'll be on YouTube soon, I look forward to watching it, I think everyone will enjoy it. Billy Keller had a lot of nice things to say, so that was pretty cool.
Sure do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Jacob with Public Works.
Yeah, I'm pinch-hitting here. So I also have an update from Tim Gropp, if you'd like. It's just Tim's stuff, but, okay, I'll share Tim's stuff too. Okay, so Able Construction Site has been active, that's the project over on Gilman. It's on schedule, hopefully open early, 2020, weather-dependent. The 10th and Polco Project, the remediation there is moving along. They've been clearing some brush, installing storm drainage, that project is scheduled to be done early December, they're hoping right now. SRC held a public meeting for the intersection improvements at 25th and High School. I know a lot of people were there, very well attended. There's a video out in case you missed it and would like some more information about it, but that was great to see that many folks come out and they are hoping to do that project here and maybe even get it done here in the spring of next year, if they can get that project rolling. And I know a lot of people have seen it, but McCallister's is going in at Grindstone Charlie's. They've asked us to share that they are hiring and they hope to be open early November at the latest. Moving on to Public Works, Water Department, they are going to be flushing the fire hydrants this week, Monday through Wednesday, 9:00 to 1:00 AM. We put a notice out, it might have looked like a typo, but it's actually 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM is when we'll be doing that work. And then also, just want to mention that we're still looking for an open operator, so if you have water treatment certifications, we'd love to talk to you. If you just have the ability to get them or are interested, we'll also talk to you, but just kind of keeping the word out on that. Waste Water Plant, Influent Fine Screen Equipment, this is the project we've been working on for a long time. We tried to get some grant money, could not get that awarded from the state, but it is a project that we needed to move forward with. We have ordered equipment and have bids out to install that work, which will be opened on this month, October 28th, at 1:35 PM publicly. And then I'm going to need to pass along that they're hosting the Central Indiana Operator Association of the Indiana Water Environment Association, they're hosting their fall meeting at the Waste Water Treatment Plant on November 7th and Norm is really looking forward to that. I think they have some, like a toilet humor contest at that or something like that. But, yeah, you want to, the CIOA of the IWEA, if you want to be there. The Street Department, 2019 asphalt project, we're still kind of in punchless mode and particularly we've been redoing some of the approaches at Buick and Elaine Street. Appreciate everyone's patience on that. I know it's frustrating, you lost access to your driveway and now you're doing, having to do it again, but they, several of them, there's just too much gap between the street and the approach, which would have either broken down or also just been an inconvenience for the homeowners, so we've been working with our contractor on that to get that corrected. And then Carver's Road, striping should be completed this week, is what they have told us, so we'll be looking for that to happen. And then if we can just bleed into item number 12, if that's okay with you, Madam President.
Quick question though, so we've not seen any other dumping or anything like that that we've had a couple of months back on?
At the Waste Water Treatment Plant, no, I mean, we're watching it very closely still, but since the media blitz, we haven't seen anything since that happened, yeah, fortunately.
Do we know what the final cost was on that, that it cost us?
We don't and it, to be honest with you, the meter's kind of still running on that. The oil took a lot of oxygen out of the system and kind of imbalanced, to use Norm's words, the bugs and the bad bugs have kind of overtaken the good bugs, to kind of put it in terms I can understand, so they're trying to kind of sort that out. So we're still actually kind of spending a little bit of money to kind of get the plant to recover from that.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, now you can go into your?
Okay, thank you. All I have, the, we put a press release out, but- All I have, the, we put a press release out, but FEMA has approved our letter of map revision for the floodplain, finally. That has been an ongoing project and process and approval process for many years now, so happy to see that kind of coming to an end. There is a comment period where it will not become truly effective on the flood maps until January 24th, so frustrating that it's gonna, there's this comment period, but that is just part of the public process that the federal government has to go through. We're gonna have a public meeting on October 24th here at Town Hall at 5:30, just to kind of, we'll have the engineers just to answer any questions, any concerns, we'll have it taped if you can't be there. If your only question is, hey, my house was in the floodplain, is it still in the floodplain? The answer is no, I'll save you the trip in. There are some structures that are either detached or maybe like a shed or garage or something like that, that didn't quite get taken out of the floodplain, but for the houses, all houses within the Towne Speedway, effective on January 24th, will be out of the floodplain at that time. And that's all I have.
Meeting on the 24th, can we, I know one of the questions I would have if I were in the floodplain would be, a lot of folks have their property and casualty insurance or their flood insurance comes due January 1st, and I'll expect you to answer this question, but I would think we would, we can't speak for the insurance firms, the actual carriers, but I would think it would make sense for us to maybe have an expert there, whether it's an agent or two, that we could answer some questions to the public, because knowing that before you get to January 1st would really be helpful. How do you make 24 days of coverage versus all 12 months and struggling a little bit to get the monies back, so just a thought for having someone there on the 24th to help us, help those in town with that.
And different insurance carriers are gonna be different, kind of what, maybe they allow you to go to the next month or whatever, you know, we can, we'll certainly have information, I mean, this is, it's certainly been adopted, but most, I think, insurance carriers don't count it until they can go onto the public maps and see for certain, okay, yeah, it's changed. We can try to have somebody there on the insurance side, but I just wanna caution that we will not be able to give insurance advice, our only advice is that even though your house may no longer be in a floodplain, we still encourage carrying some type of flood insurance, should be certainly reduced since you're out of the floodplain, but still a good idea to continue to carry that. But it will typically, the banks require it if you're in a floodplain and don't require it if you're not, so that requirement should fall off, but again, we're still encouraging folks to keep it.
Thank you.
Other questions for Jacob?
Right.
Thank you, Jacob. Next, our reports from councilors, we'll start with Councilor Gary Rix.
Just real quick, couple weeks, or last weekend, trying to think when it was, the Home Helpers, what a great day that was to have so many folks from the community out working on the homes of folks who couldn't take, couldn't necessarily work on some of their homes. There was a particular home in town that had, I don't know, probably 20 or more people working on it at one particular moment, and we appreciate, Jacob, your work to get our yard waste truck there to deal with a huge mound of yard waste. The Allison variance approval was really important to our town, there were a few of us there that evening, speaking to our Board of Zoning Appeals, really pleased that our board approved those variances. It helps Allison in their, ultimately, they're investing $400 million in our community, and it truly helped them to continue that process going forward. And boards and commissions will be terming at the end of the year, for those that are interested, it's never too early to start thinking about what boards and commissions you might wanna serve on in 2020. And then finally, I had the opportunity to come out to Leonard Park and meet some of the Prax Air employees with Tammy that worked in our parks. It was really interesting to hear some of the comments from them. Most of them actually don't live in our town, they work in our town but don't live here, and to hear them talk about the improvements they've seen in the last several years, and appreciating the fact that a couple of them are thinking about moving to our town, so it was just a really good opportunity to be out there with them and thank them for their service, so that's it.
Thanks, Gary. Next is Councilor David Lindsey.
Just one thing I'd like to acknowledge, I wish we could have had them here tonight, but with fall break being out, schools being out this week, didn't think it would work out well, so I didn't invite them, but our girls' 7th grade volleyball team from the junior high won the Marion County Tournament a couple weeks ago, and that is, I believe, the first ever county championship for the junior high in any sport. They are to be commended, that is wonderful. Congratulations to them, that's all I have.
Thanks, David. And Vice President Jeff Matthews.
Thank you, Madam President. This Thursday, representatives from Brixmore, who manage the Speedway Super Center, Chief Campbell, Assistant Chief of Church, Jacob, Kroger Management, both local and national management, myself will be meeting in regards to the Speedway Shopping Center, and this is an important first step to alleviating some of our issues, so we'll report back once we learn a little bit more, and that's all I've got.
And when's that meeting again, Jeff?
It is Thursday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And last is my report, I just want to thank Tammy for your hard work on Saturday with the unveiling of the sign there in Meadowwood, it's like an old homecoming week there of all the basketball players. Thank you to our public, our library board for coming out this evening to get your budget approved, too, so...and then just to finish up with what Gary had said in regards to the boards and commissions, there should be an application, Jacob, online for them to complete?
Yes, there is, you can fill out online.
Okay, all right, and so if you need more information, you can go on our site and get that information. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:42.